Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Compton. I have the privilege of serving as the Bay Park Conservancy Secretary. Day job is a lawyer here in Sarasota. We are here today to ask you to approve the Bay Park Phase Two Capital Projects Plan, as approved by the BPIB on September 14th, 2022. You all will probably have already heard we're opening Phase One of the Bay Park later this week. We're very excited and we don't want to stop there. We want to keep the momentum going. To that end, the Bay Park Conservancy recommended to the Bay Park Improvement Board, which was created as part of the inter-local agreement, that we go ahead with the capital projects in Phase Two. I'm happy to report that when the BPIB met and heard that recommendation, everyone on the board, including Commissioners Dieter and Commissioner Ziegler, thank you, unanimously voted to approve the capital projects for Phase Two. We then took that to the City Commission, reviewed it with them, and again, I'm happy to report that by a unanimous vote, the City Commission also approved Phase Two of the capital projects. So today, we are asking you all to continue the trend and approve Phase Two of the capital projects in the park as part of the Bay Park. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, let's have the presentation.
AG Laffley and Bill Waddell, you know Bill. I'm a businessman. My day job is startups, early-stage companies, managing them, advising them, and investing in them. My passion, nonprofit passion, is the Bay Park where I serve as a volunteer founding CEO of the Park Conservancy. I'll simply say, as Bill goes through the slides that show you the master plan and Phase One, that over the last six years, we have endeavored to, and I believe have, delivered on every commitment we've made to the county, to the city, and most importantly, to the community. We are about to open Phase One this Friday. We made the decision on Friday after the hurricane, and a lot of people have worked incredibly hard over the last two weeks to make this happen. And more importantly, I think our community broadly, our region, our county, and our city need a third place that they can get out of their homes, get away from their jobs, get away from the burdens of every day, and get out in nature and get out in 14 acres of new public park available to the public. We will be offering 90-plus events over 10 days' opening. Every single event will be free, free, accessible, open, and free to the public. Three things you should know. From the beginning, our intent was to create a park that met the needs and of the region and the needs of the public and the needs of the city and the county. We committed that this park would be financially sustainable and feasible. We committed that this park would be operationally doable, hence the Park Conservancy, and we committed that it would be environmentally sustainable. Three legs of our strategy. First is environmental restoration, resilience, and sustainability. If those of you who have been out there have seen what we've done so far, but we're going to treat every drop of water on that site. We're improving air quality, and resilience is critical. And we got that lesson again with Hurricane Ian. Second point is, we have an opportunity for fitness, health, and wellness in the outdoors. We're delivering that on all fronts. And finally, we're offering a place where people can come together and appreciate all of the things that our community has to offer, from arts and culture and education, et cetera, all accessible, open, and free. Last point I'll make is, every step along the way, we've tested, we've made a little, tried a little, and learned a lot. This is the next big step. After we opened Phase One, which is a $40-plus million project, all-in, funded 90% from private sources, we'd said we'd do 80% from private sources. We exceeded that commitment. We said we'd do it with cash. We did it with cash. So this is the first time with Phase Two that we're asking for government support via the tax increment financing, which, as Bill will tell you in a minute, will cover 75% of the Phase Two capital cost. The rest will be covered from private sources and from government grants we've received. Last point I'll make is, everything we propose today that Bill takes you through is, in keeping with the terms of the inter-local agreement, conforms with the master plan that we recommended to both Commissions and you all approved way back in 2018, and delivers on what I said earlier, financially feasible, operationally doable, and sustainable in every way. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Mr. Lewis. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just take you through what we'll be opening this weekend with Phase One, but then specifically, the Phase Two, four projects that are part of Phase Two, and then happy to answer any questions you might have. Of course, our first 14 acres opens this Saturday, so we've got about 100 people on site working today, and we're right at the finish line. We're very excited about it. This has been quite a journey, actually nine years, although I've been at it for five years. And I won't go through the financial portion of it, but as AG said, 90% of it has been funded with private philanthropy. Our business plan has always been 50/50, public-private, and so this Phase Two will bring the balance up closer to 50/50. Again, our Phase One is on the south end of the site, and will include a number of features, including the restoration of this beautiful fountain garden at the corner of 41 and Boulevard of the Arts, restoration of a coastal wetland we call the Mangrove Bayou, beautiful shade structure and concession area designed by local architect Jerry Sparkman and his team at Sweet Sparkman, couple acres of common ground, flexible lawns that are looking beautiful. This is a progress photo, but a ibis-themed playground, small but beautiful playground on the shoreline, inspired by the flocks of hundreds of ibis that come to the shore in the winter. And of course, resiliency improvements along our beautiful shoreline that enables folks to see close to 300 sunsets a year. So again, I mentioned 14 acres or so is what's opening this weekend. That includes a sort of a spruce-up of our quarter-mile of western shoreline. On the right, in red, are the four Phase Two projects, which are also about 14 acres as well. And again, today, we're specifically hoping for approval of the four projects, the capital projects. That is, at this point, we've already gone through this annual cycle of the investment of the revenues into the trust fund. So today, we're asking for simple approval of these four projects as a part of Phase Two, again, consistent with the inter-local agreement. And these four projects include what we're calling Dockside, which is on the south side of the Canal District, the City Side Cultural District that runs along US 41, the western shoreline, the permitted improvements, and then the installation of the Sunset Boardwalk and Pier. As AG mentioned, the project overall is approximately $65 million. We are anticipating that $48 million of that is paid for by a city bond, and then the balance of that with $12 million in grants that have already been awarded, as well as an additional $5 million in private capital. First project, Dockside, the South Canal District, that's the improvements on the south side of the canal. Commissioner Cutsinger and I, and Justin McBride with WCID, walked that, I think it was late last year. But I believe we all saw, I know that we all saw the potential of this area that is so used by so many of our county residents, but also, especially the south side, the seawall is literally falling into the canal. And so, we desperately need some investment there to improve that, which we will. We'll add day docks, and then we'll do some of the initial infrastructure improvements, including hardening the power in this location, as well as pre-treating the stormwater, and to create an at-grade food village, again, as a first phase, that will enable future investment in restaurants in the Canal District, as well as an expansion of the boat ramp. The restaurants are an important part of the overall Bay project, because that is a large amount of the funding that we'll pay to operate and maintain this park in perpetuity. This project, we budgeted $15 million. This is a conceptual rendering by Sweet Sparkman of the food village shade structure, inspired by Sarasota School of Architecture. Second project included is the City Side Cultural District that runs along 41, includes four National Register buildings, including the municipal auditorium. This project includes primarily horizontal park improvements, not much in the way of building improvements, but creates and enhances the two old lawn bowling lawns into recreational lawns. It provides for a flexible plaza south of the auditorium that will include a family interactive fountain that went off, can be used for different kinds of festivals and art shows, and substantial landscape enhancements, as well as the restoration of the 80-year-old Hazard Fountain that hasn't worked as long as I've been in Sarasota, right in front of the auditorium. And our construction managers helped us establish a budget of $20 million for that The Sunset Boardwalk and Pier is a third project with, we've established a budget of $15 million. We're a little over a year into the Corps of Engineers permitting process. Our team thinks we've probably got another eight to 12 months to get through that process, and then we will build that Sunset Boardwalk from the water while Phase One remains open. You might notice the subtle change in the shape of the boardwalk. That is to reflect, exhibited in the upper right there, the green is existing seagrass and the orange is existing corals, and so that reflects a desire to nestle the boardwalk pier where there's minimal environmental impact, while still allowing folks that don't have waterfront property to get out over the water and enjoy our great sunsets. And our team has set a budget of $15 million. The picture on the right, minus the Manhattan skyline, is a pretty good, sort of an illustration of what you might see. But the existing path that we've spruced up for our opening is down at elevation four or five. Obviously, to be resilient, that needs to be much higher up at eight or 10. And you may remember Governor DeSantis came in this last January and gave us a big check for $10.4 million, which is for resiliency improvements along the shoreline to make that a floodable, resilient landscape. And of course, that's all at the top of our mind with the events of the last couple of years. I'm sorry, last couple of weeks. And so, in closing, again, the BPC, as a part of this first phase we're doing with cash, 90% of the funds have been privately raised through foundations and private donors, and so, and we also have taken a very lean startup staffing approach with a very small staff, three, up until about six or eight months ago. Now we're up to six, which is what we need to build the next phase and to operate a great park. And then in terms of park management, we estimate between $1 million and $2 million to operate the 14 acres that we're going to open. But as we get a few months into this, we'll learn what it takes to operate a park and do good projections. And you may remember that financial sustainability is a key principle of ours. Both the revenue from the restaurants in the Canal District, as well as an endowment that we've already established from private donations, will pay to sustain this park and keep it operated and maintained at a very high level. And again, we're a very transparent organization. We've held over 300 public meetings in the five years that our teams have been in place. And of course, we have annual audits, post all of those on our website, as well as our annual 990, and come at least once a year to this body, to the City Commission and the Bay Park Improvement Board, to review progress and future projects. And then the last thing I'll leave you with is that our community, in recent surveys, has said now more than ever how important it is to have a place to come out and bring their family and enjoy our great quality of life and enjoy each other. And in fact, our most recent survey, 95% of the respondents said they would come to our park, and 50% they'd come, said they'd come on a weekly basis. And so I think that was even before Ian. So I think that underscores how important great public spaces are to our community, especially now. All of these projects, we believe that we can complete within three years from when the funding is available, and so we can double the amount of park that we have within three years, which we're very, very excited about. And again, I'm very proud that we have got a financial plan that will make us sustainable financially in perpetuity. And so with that, happy to open it up to any questions anyone might have.
Yeah, we'll start with Commissioner Dieter and then Commissioner Ziegler.
You have shortened the overlook previous to the storm, and that shows some forethought. Since the storm, have you reviewed the plan another time to see if any changes have to be made in light of the, I don't even know how to describe our last storm, but it's something we probably haven't seen in, well, 50 years or better. So for that strength, will this hold up?
That's a great question, and the timing is interesting for us to evaluate moving forward. But certainly, everything we do on this project has been done with an eye toward resiliency. Again, I mentioned the shoreline improvements, the permanent improvements that will make this a floodable shoreline. The idea from the beginning has been the western third of our site, when complete, will be floodable and resilient, and the eastern portion of the site is where any new buildings would be built on higher ground, elevation 15 or 20 or more. So that's certainly at the forefront of everything that we do. This structure is designed to withstand, you know, what we saw from Ian. And again, as you see in this slide, we've worked very hard with the permitting agencies and our design team to nestle this structure into a place where it does, minimizes any environmental impact, but enables, again, a lot of our, most of our park users do not have, you know, a waterfront condo or a boat dock or access to get out over the water, and so this enables all in our community to come out and watch our great sunsets, to do some fishing, and to really enjoy another reason to come out to the park.
Okay, Commissioner, anything else? Commissioner?
No. So no changes in this plan will hold up?
No, ma'am. No substantial changes. This plan will hold up, but certainly, with every event like this, our team evaluates what's happened, evaluates what we should do moving forward, and incorporates any learning into that.
And Chair, I hope at the proper time you'll allow me to make the motion. I do chair the committee involved in this and have followed the progress and proud of the work you're doing, and thank you and AG for doing it and your whole, I shouldn't say your whole staff, because you don't really have one. Your small group has been amazing.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
And I will recognize you for the motion. Commissioner Ziegler then Commissioner Moran.
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, at the last TIF board meeting, I want to be clear, because I kind of heard some statements at the City Commission meeting, and, you know, at that board meeting, when we discussed this, a couple of things, and I'm just speaking for myself as one board member, but when this bond was presented, we did get the materials, like, I think the first time I really saw it was right before we voted on it. It was put on our desk. The second thing is, the city is issuing the debt, so when I voted on this, it was to send it to the city, let the city decide if they want to take on that debt, because we don't necessarily play a role in it. And number three is, and hopefully, we can have an in-depth conversation on this today, is to send this Phase Two to the individual commissions to have a real discussion on what should be incorporated in Phase Two. So my yes vote wasn't necessarily a full endorsement of what you see here, and I'll go into why in a second. It was just to move it along through the process, let the city decide on the debt, and let us decide on Phase Two. So I want to be very clear on that, specifically in Phase Two. And I brought this up, literally, before you had designs. I think Bill and I chatted about two major things, and I'm not sure that they've really been incorporated in this entire process, and I think it's a big missed opportunity, is number one, direct waterfront dining. I know we have dining in the Canal District. In Sarasota County, I can tell you, when I ran for county commission, the feedback that I received through polls and just from talking to citizens as well, is Sarasota County has no waterfront dining opportunities. It's very rare. Couple places in, I believe, Nakomis, Osprey, Venice, you have Sharkies, but when you get north of that to downtown, you have Marina Jacks, which is great, but you're looking at boats, which is what this is going to do. I mean, you're going to be looking at a Canal District. Or, I don't know where you go. I mean, you can go to Mar Vista, well, I don't even think that's in Sarasota County still. So to get waterfront dining or directly on the bay, directly on the Gulf, sea sunset, we just don't have anything. So, I mean, this is prime real estate for that. And I understand that, you know, I brought this up at the board meeting that we had, the Bay Board, and the feedback was, well, everyone's given feedback that they want open green space, which is understood. But I think when that was taken, the discussion was, do we want a full boardwalk with a bunch of condos and restaurants, or do we want a park? And obviously, people are going to say a park, but I think you can incorporate direct bay dining here if you came around the turn and you put a restaurant overlooking the bay. I think that's a huge amenity that's missed in Sarasota County, and we are an equal partner in this. I'll remind everyone, you know, we're going to put in the same amount of money the city's going to put in with these TIF payments, and I think that's a huge missed opportunity. And the second thing is the playground. Nothing drives me crazy more than a playground that's designed by adults. I think it's important to incorporate kids and make sure that it's designed for fun first, and then it can look good afterwards. And, you know, just seeing some of these pictures, I don't know that I would take my kids there right away if this is what the concept is going to be. And, you know, having shade is important. I know the circus playground downtown is a big issue, because for half the year, you can't even use it because it's so hot, because it's direct in sunlight, whereas we have, like, Oofur Park that has a lot of the trees, and then the downtown, the Bay Park right on the bay, right by Marina Jacks is fantastic, because it's covered. So I would encourage you to incorporate some children when you're doing the design, or some adults that have children that know what fun is for them, that keeps them busy. And so the waterfront dining is a big thing for me, and the playground is a big thing for me. Both are missing, in my mind, at least from what I've seen so far. Looks great. I mean, I have the ibis or whatever, but, you know, I want a place where my kids are going to go for two hours and I don't even need to think about it, and they can go out there and have fun, and I could sit there and enjoy myself, ideally grab a drink and sit there and watch. And then the third thing that I'll ask you, Bill, too, is about the TIF projection, right? When this was voted on by this board, I think the board, and again, I did not support it at the time, but I think the board missed an opportunity to put a cap on this. And when you look at the TIF projections, initially, we were projected to do $92 million in contributions towards this. Now it's $154 million, and that's an increase of $62 million of county commitment that we're projected to lay out. Now, I know this board in the future can make a decision if we're going to do those payments or not. I would encourage the board to consider putting in a cap in terms of what we initially agreed to, because again, these are tax dollars that can go to other county operations and other county projects, and I think that if we let the TIF basically continue to increase and run wild, they're going to find a way to spend this. And I think it's on us to maybe consider putting a cap. I don't know what the rest of the commission thinks on that, but again, the initial projection was $92 million. The current projection's $154 million. So I guess my question's for you, Bill, while you're up here, and maybe hopefully, the board will have a discussion on this, is number one, the waterfront dining. Number two, what can we do to make the playground more appealing? Because I promise you, that's where the users will come on a daily basis. And then number three is, you know, what are you guys, when you're looking at these projections, obviously, you're having discussions, the 68, the extra 68 or 62 million, you know, what are you guys planning to do with the extra $62 million right now? Because that's the projections you guys are pushing out there and using on these slides. So I'd like to hear feedback on all that.
Thank you, Commissioner. It was a lot. Maybe I'll start with the playground first. You may or may not remember, this playground, this is the master plan, was always envisioned to be a very small initial piece of our play strategy that does involve families and children. The centerpiece of that is an adventure playground that will come between, in the future, along the shoreline there, between the Van Waisel and the new Performing Arts Center, should the city move forward to the Performing Arts Center. So that will be a substantial playground for families. And then the other piece is the interactive fountain for families that I mentioned that's a part of our cultural district. You know, interactive fountains is a very important, you know, piece for families to come in the summertime in Florida. I've designed half a dozen in my prior career, and so that's sort of a three-phase deployment, the small one initially, the interactive fountain, and then the adventure play in the future. Moving forward to the second comment about the dining, let me jump to that last slide that was not in the presentation, but we couldn't agree more that waterfront dining is a critical opportunity for multiple reasons. One, because of what you said, there's very little waterfront dining, oddly, in Sarasota County, and so we recognize that that's important. We believe that this needs to be deployed in a phased manner. We need to evaluate the future expansion of the boat ramp, which we have begun, but there's a lot of work to be done there. It involves a lot of the public agencies, but that's certainly a part of our plan. We also have a food and beverage working group that includes a number of terrific entrepreneurs, like Wayne Rubin and Dick Rivera and Ed Childs, who runs Mar Vista and others, and there have been advising us. They agree that this site and this site are by far the best waterfront locations for waterfront restaurants, but there are pluses and minuses. The more you push the, especially on the north side, the dining, we of course had, I thought, a healthy discussion at the Bay Park Improvement Board about this, the more impact you have to the heavily-used boat ramp. So a lot of thought to be done there and evaluated. All of it are opportunities to be solved and to make a great destination. But this phase, all we're proposing is the south side infrastructure investment that enables future waterfront restaurant deployment. And so, again, a lot of work to be done there. This is a conceptual study that we did to make sure whatever we do in this Phase Two does not create any challenges that we weren't expecting as a part of the next phase. The other thing I just wanted to mention, too, this is a critical part of our financial plan to sustain the park. There are half a dozen different sources in our long-term financial plan to operate and maintain, but by far, the two biggest are the endowment that we take off of private investment in the park, and then the revenue that we will, we will take a portion of, off of this waterfront dining, off of the restaurants. And so we've done a lot of evaluation of that, a lot more to be done, but we couldn't agree more that this district is extremely critical for a lot of reasons.
But, you know, I guess, just to be clear again, I mean, this, for me, isn't necessarily what I'm looking for, for waterfront dining. I'm looking directly on the bay, looking at our beautiful bay, not looking at another restaurant across, you know, a canal, and there'll be boats there, which will be beautiful, it'll be great, but we already have that, and we're missing that bayfront dining. And I know with this property, this is a huge piece of land, and I know when you go to design, you could incorporate it, and it would be amazing. I mean, when I have clients come into town that are from the northeast, I mean, sometimes the dining establishment sells the location, and we spend all this money, marketing, trying to get people to do business here and move here and do tourism here, and you could take someone out to lunch, they could see the bay, they could see the Gulf, and be wowed, and come back and end up moving a business. So, you know, we get cute with all these advertising campaigns, and sometimes it's the most basic. And right now, when I have clients come in, I can tell you, I go to Jack Dusty at the Ritz, looking at a marina. I go to Marina Jacks, looking at a marina. You know, you really, it's very difficult, and it's a big weakness of our county, and we're running out of areas. So for me, waterfront dining, I'm talking about directly on the bay, unobstructed views, looking at the sunset, near downtown, near the airport. It's all fantastic, and it's a great opportunity. So that's the only reason why I keep bringing that up.
And Commissioner, again, thank you for the feedback. That's, you and I have discussed it quite a bit over the years. I'm an avid boater and have been, and I totally agree with you. And so it's, for future phases, we completely agree with that. AG, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, loud and clear. It's loud and clear. It's just not in this phase. And I would say one other thing about this phase. One of the things that we've really benefited from is one step at a time. So on the playground, we'll learn who uses it, and we'll design the next playground better, and I totally get your point. I have kids and grandkids, four grandkids. I'd also mention that those recreation lawns are going to be turned into active play, beginning with this Saturday. We'll have shade structures up there, better seating. A lot of what kids need is just a place to get a ball out, okay, and have fun. On the restaurant, we'll look at all options, okay, including north of here and south of here, but there's a very real challenge around environmental resiliency and all the rest of it. So all options are on the table. It's the next phase. I want to address the TIF budget. Amazingly, we said in 2018, when we came with the master plan, that we thought the total project cost would be $150 million. Okay, that's without several years of 3% to 4% inflation and 8+ that we're looking at right now. Will it hold? We don't know for sure, but everything we've proposed in Phase Two is very close, right, Bill?
Yes.
To what we were looking at two years ago, one years ago. And some of those, the first one, Canal Zone, that's a 95% complete project, so we know that estimate's good, and a couple others are 50-plus percent. So we're not going to raise our estimate of what it costs to deliver this park from a capital improvement standpoint, just because there's more money on the table. That's not the way we operate. Okay? The way we operate is we deliver the best possible park against the master plan and site plan that Bill and his team put together for the most efficient cost. The reason why we run like a startup with three of us is because it's way more efficient. We operate at less than 2% of total revenue that comes in. You will not find another nonprofit in this area. You won't find another nonprofit in America that operates that way. And the reason we operate that way is because everything's partnered, it's partnered, provided, or it's outsourced, and almost everything is local. That's why we've put $40 million worth of That's why we've put 40 million dollars worth of development into this project, most of it local already so far. So I just want to assure you, just because the budget goes up, doesn't mean that our capital improvement estimate's going to go up.
Yeah, and, if I may, and I appreciate that, but look, when we're doing projects here, we have cost increases as well. And we come back and we do amendments and then we do commitments at that time and the board may change over and we may have different people. So the cost of the project, the overall project, isn't necessarily my concern. My concern is the commitment that we make and the way that's structured. And right now, it is structured for us to give an additional 60, we initially committed 92 million and there's additional 62 million that's projected. Whether that comes to fruition or not, who knows? And I'm, nothing stops this board in 15 years, 20 years, saying, you know what? The project's costs have gone up, look at what happened historically and, you know, we see this as a very valuable project, we're going to commit more dollars. Nothing stops the boards from doing that if we were to put a cap in. I just think that it was a missed opportunity and I think, I just don't see this with the other projects. We do a lot of projects here that we build and I just don't see it with other projects where it can just incrementally continue to increase without having board approval or sign off, which is really oversight. And without coming back to this board, I mean, a lot of our votes are people coming back and saying, hey, we projected 3 million and now it's three and a half. We need that five, you know, that half a million difference. And that's all I'm encouraging this board and looking at. But again, I mean, 62 million is a lot when the initial projection was 92 for us. So, you know, I understand a little bit of cost increases, but maybe there's not an appetite from this board. I mean, hopefully we can get into that when we make a motion and we have a discussion, but I think there should be a cap placed, that's my personal opinion.
Yes, sir, your discretion and your decisions and you can make them every year. So I think that's an excellent point. May I say one other thing? We're bringing this proposal and we brought it now because we're trying to balance two things which you're trying to balance. One is the rate of inflation, okay, which is now eight to 10%. So you may recall, we went last November to the city, amended our partnership agreement, added an implementation agreement, accelerated the process with more administrative approvals. And we did that in an era of three to 4% inflation and we estimated that we could speed up the project by three to five years and it would save 15 to 20 million dollars. In a time of 8% inflation, those capital improvement, cost avoidance numbers double. So that 15 to 20 in capital improvement savings over 10-year project would move to 30 to 40 million. So there's a balancing act going on here, right? We're looking at rising interest rates, we're looking at rising inflation rates, we're looking at the reality of keeping a team together at a time when it's hard to keep your labor force together, swift construction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we're trying to balance all of those and what we're proposing for your consideration and ultimate approval is a balance that we believe serves the interest of the county, the region, the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Moran now.
Thank you, Chair. First off, Bill, you're just truly a wonderful friend.
Thank you.
I think this project is wonderful. I mean, it truly is generally just going to be an amazing park. I don't think there's any question it'll last for decades. You specifically, you know, this board, we interact with thousands of people, literally thousands of people, and they couldn't have picked a better person, seriously, Bill. I've said this before.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I know you're dealing with a lot of characters related to this whole thing and I can't even imagine what you deal with on a daily basis. You know, with that said, I'll be a consistency vote of no on this. From day one, it's never wavered with me. I just have some genuine concern. It's as genuine as it can be, but it does give me heartburn that a park, in my opinion, should be funded with general funds. Using this vehicle of a TIF has concerned me since day one. The city of Sarasota is a standalone municipal authority. They have the power and authority to tax their residents. And if they want to park, they bring it to the people. A gentleman like you, bring it to the people, the people support it and they support the tax to pay for it. Anything that deviates from that related to a park, I've just expressed concern and I think I've been genuine about it and transparent about it and public about it. I just don't like the funding mechanism of this. With that said, I do genuinely think it's an amazing project. I think you did exactly what your mission, you carried out to do on this bill. It is amazing, truly, and I wish you much luck on it, I really do. With that, Chair, just one more, while we have Bill here, would he openly commit to, in the public, to delaying his retirement for the 29 years of the remaining payments of this TIF?
I'll have to do the math. Can I get back to you, Commissioner?
Yes.
On that one, thank you. Commissioner, thank you for your comments and appreciate your kind words and also your thoughtful feedback. Two, two quick things. One, all of our surveys that we've done to date and we continue to do them reflect that about two-thirds of the users are from outside the city. So you could say the majority are county residents outside of the city. So we're already a county, you know, draw, particularly for this boat ramp, 10th Street Boat Ramp area, is majority county, Sarasota County users, because folks don't have waterfront boat docks. They live at east or north and need a place to access the water, which is also in short supply, including restaurants. So this is a really important regional facility from the beginning. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, related to what Commissioner Ziegler was saying and others, Commissioner Mayo, you may remember, Commissioner Mayo had us add a item four, which is a performance evaluation in 15 years, to address the situation that Commissioner Ziegler brought up. And so while we feel great about a two-year sample of real estate values going up, we all know how real estate works. We're already seeing that real estate's topping and starting to come down. We know where the cycle goes. And so we feel wonderful that we can take advantage of by building phase two a year sooner before the cycle goes where it inevitably goes. But the performance evaluation is already built in. In 10 or 11 years, there's an evaluation to adjust course if we haven't built the park. And there was always discussion that this district could be sunsetted sooner, pay down the principal sooner, do more park, whatever the two commissions and the BPIB decide to do. And then lastly, we come before you, at minimum annually, your commission, city commission and BPIB, this year it's twice. And so there's lots of opportunities to evaluate planned improvements, prior improvements, future improvements.
Okay. Commissioner Moran, and then I'm going to add something to this discussion before I recognize Commissioner Deeter for a motion.
Bill, sorry, just one more thing, an afterthought here is, and some of your calculations and projections, which I get it, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, but it was like 1.5 to 2 million in annual maintenance, but then most of them was the annual maintenance was to be determined. Again, not necessarily, I got to think about that. I don't know necessarily where we step into that because the city is going to be dealing with this.
Right.
But what is it?
So based on, all of the projections on maintenance, of course, are projections, just like the TIF, 30 years from now is a projection. We'll have actuals. We've based this on other great parks around the country, what they spend every year to maintain the park. Our financial advisors are saying, at build out, this 53 acres will be 4 to 5 million a year to maintain. And so we've based our business plan, again, funded half a dozen different ways, but primarily through the endowment plus revenue from the Canal District, to fund, to generate 4 to 5 million a year in perpetuity to maintain the park. So what we're saying, Commissioner, is that we anticipate this first 14 acres will be a million or two after this weekend. And we get a year down the road, we'll have actuals and we'll know how much it costs and then we can adjust as we need to, either maintain at a different level or anticipate additional revenues.
Chair, just one more.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner, if I may, just say, on that one and a half to 2 million, this year we'll finish at about a million dollars total operating cost for the Bay Park Conservancy. The majority of that is staff. So Bill plus six others. We'll probably hire one or two more as we operate. So a million plus will be essentially staff. We've already done a budget for activation and programming for next calendar year that comes in at about 250 to 300,000 dollars. That's actually very efficient versus other parks that we've benchmarked against. Our maintenance, as Bill said, has been only 10,000 a month so far, over 100,000 a year. It's going to be more than that because we've only been taking care of the Fountain Garden and the Mangrove Bayou and that's the one piece. We have a very good fix on staff costs. We know what the salaries are, we know what the benefits are, et cetera. We have a very good fix on what are called activation and programming costs. The one we don't have as good a fix on is the maintenance. We know what we've spent so far, we know it's going to be more, that's why we have the reins, sir.
Well, Chair, if I could. So if, I guess what I'm looking at is how granular are you going to get in that? For example?
Very.
And here's where we got...
It's in the weeds, if you'll pardon the pun.
I like that. So, for example, is it going to be in your overhead budget that, for example, if they have to bring another police officer on staff? Is that going to be on your budget or is that going to be on the city's budget?
Well, it's, so we have a partnership agreement with the city, as you know, and the funding, there's half a dozen sources. Primary funding, again, is endowment and then future revenue from the Canal District. But there's also, the city is responsible for basic, all basic maintenance of any of their, like they do at any of their 60 parks. And so for Payne Park that you mentioned, city's responsible to either do that level of maintenance or give us the money, equivalent money, in the Bay Park. And then we do all the enhanced with all of those funds that we generate. So TIF, of course, money is only capital for new park, not for maintenance.
Well, that's where I get, and I started this conversation with, I'm not, I don't want people stepping into our business and I'm not interested in stepping into the city's business. I'm just, is somebody going to give the Excel spreadsheet, how much is this going to cost? Because somebody's got to work it at the city.
We have, we have worked it.
And hopefully the obvious question after that is, there going to be no expectation of the people that we're responsible for and the county taxpayers? So just getting this all on the record, Bill.
No, Commissioner, yes.
Fast forward 15 years, fast forward 15 years on this, and if this is a big, big Excel spreadsheet, who's going to be paying for it?
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
Commissioner, that's a very fair question. We have gotten granular on what it's going to cost to maintain and operate based on other parks just like it. But again, all the funding comes from the city and from funds that we generate, not from the county. The only county contribution is the TIF funds to capital to help build the park.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we get to Commissioner Deeter, this has been a great discussion, a lot of questions. That's what this is about. You'll face it every time you come and see us, I'm sure. First of all, I'm going to put a number of things, my thoughts into the record, some of which in the past I got wonderful, not really, wonderful emails about. But first of all, I was this board's representative on the Sarasota Chamber and visit Sarasota County when a lot of this got its start, if you will, eight years ago. So I witnessed every single bit of that went to many meetings. And I put into the record in the past, because I'm very proud of it, that Kathy Layton and Bill Waddell and I have been friends for nearly 40 years. I'm only down here 38 years, so I'm sure I'll get an email correcting me that it can't be 40 years. So it's really 38 years. And Bill also, and I said this repeatedly, was my business partner for 18 years. And we probably spent no less than four or five hours a day together for 18 years. It was great for me, I learned a lot. It was probably miserable for Bill Waddell, but that's, that's the way that corporation was set up. I was a holdout. You didn't have three votes for this. But what I did was I met Kathy Layton several times, with board members several times, always going to staff, making sure that I wasn't breaking any of the rules. And I would venture to say that Bill and I spent a good 100 hours going over the numbers. And I really, in my own way, I didn't say it aggressively, but I conditioned my vote on that 15-year review. When we looked at what was happening, when my background and my relationships with people in the community told me that there were things that were going to be built that would enhance the TIF portion when the current ad valorem were frozen in place, I remarked that there's vacant land that's going in at zero. Actually, this board changed, adjusted, massaged, whatever word you want to use, the boundaries to make that a little more livable, possible. I think that 15-year review is probably 11 years away. I would suggest the county won't be here after November. I would strongly suggest that the county start looking at that in 10 years and drill down on it. And what a wonderful thing will happen if you've, the TIF funds greatly exceed our projections, which are now three or four years old. What a wonderful thing. And then people that are sitting here, none of us will be sitting here, and people that are sitting on other boards can make the plausible, possible adjustments. I would add that we're benefiting, we're getting, you all are getting hit with the inflation and the cost of everything. You're benefiting from the fantastic rise in real estate values. Perhaps they'll continue to skyrocket, perhaps they'll flatline, but in any event, I really believe that it's those kinds of conversations. And I would encourage you to have those kinds of conversations before you even get here, provided it's, you're doing it with one commissioner and it's not an ethics violation. This is great. I'm happy that I was almost ruining my friendship with two wonderful people and a board because I really was, not here, but privately extremely aggressive about, I like the language. And Mr. Patello and I probably had a dozen meetings going over painstakingly with the legal folks that language. So with that, I wish you all the luck in the world. I was right to be the third vote. I believe in it. I think I'm doing a two and a half hour speech, not this Friday, the following Friday.
Yes, sir.
I hope you've told, they're laughing at me, but I'm going to do it.
Still, I'm working on it, yes.
I'm going to do a two and a half hour speech. And it'll have to be Bill that grabs me by the collar and throws me off the stage. With that, we're going to still have opportunity for more discussion, but Commissioner Deeter, it's very appropriate, so why don't you make the motion? If you have it in front of you, if not, go get it.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make the motion and then I'd like to speak to the motion. The motion is to approve the Bay Park Phase Two Capital Projects Plan as approved by the Bay Park Improvement Board on September 14, 2022.
Second. Okay. I'm going to not, I'm going to withdraw my second because the new commissioner beat me by two seconds. And you need the new commissioner a lot longer than you need me. So the motion by Commissioner Deeter, second by Commissioner Cutzing. Commissioner Deeter.
Chair, I hate to give you compliments, as you know, but I was, I was impressed by your dissertation of a moment ago about the history of it. And the point, the short point of the long story is that everyone on this board has a business sense. They've either been a business owner or CEO and know how to read spreadsheets and we don't vote for things that have pictures of pretty sunsets and boats and a big fat price tag without drilling down. And I think the point that our chairman made is the amount of hours that went into that, the fact that we've looked at the numbers. I support it being as a TIF. In fact, as you were saying the words, I was writing down the same exact words, which are, "those outside the city benefit." If, this can be compared and has been compared to Central Park. I like to think of it as Millennium, Millennial Park in Chicago, which I'm more familiar with. And they have, you mentioned the interactive fountain. I would fly to Chicago, park my car, go to that park just for that fountain. So no matter how much playground equipment you have, everyone is joyful and delights in the fountain. And if you've never seen it, it's a monolith and it flips tiles and pictures of famous people are up there and, and then they'll, it'll be a picture of Abraham Lincoln, say, and he'll spit water at you. What kid isn't going to laugh their head off? And the kids can run in the water. So that burns up energy, the playground will burn up energy and you'll have, anybody, all families can have a great time at this kind of park. So having a TIF makes sense to me because it does attract tourists and it does benefit everyone in the county outside the city. I think it's remarkable that the city that's had so, a lot of heavy... I think it's remarkable that the city that's had so, a lot of heavy discussion on this, managed to vote unanimously. So good for them. That's a good thing. So the, and then the rate lock-in interests, you know, hopefully, we haven't missed the window of opportunity there, because we can do more things. Some of our history with TIFs is generally that the TIF didn't generate the amount of money that they hoped for, and that's why the projects did not do well. In this case, we're concerned that the TIF is going to generate way more money than we figured, and that's why, again, the chairman, compliment number two, did build in that 15-year review, which is the smart thing to do. So I think we've been very responsible financially. I love the project. I'm happy that I served on a board when this project came up. I'm going to be proud of that forever after. It totally changes the landscape. It benefits everyone. I really don't see a downsized, other than maybe a couple of parking problems, but aside from that, it's just my honor and privilege to support this today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Kutsinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, I've had the opportunity on a number of occasions to get out there with you, Bill, and tour the facility from the beginning. Just overwhelmed with the opportunity here is incredible, and the work that's been done already. I think we need to say something about the people that have been assembled to make this project a reality. They are the, they are the top, first-class, best in every area, and a lot of the volunteers as well, who have come together to put themselves and their time and their efforts into this. So thank you for that, and thank you and your staff and all the people who've worked together to make this a reality. For me, this checks just about every box there is. And I think about the impact on our bay. We haven't even talked this morning about the stormwater that was flowing in sheets into our bay impacting water quality, which is really, we think about, all right, well, this is in the city, but, I mean, the bay is for everyone, and our entire region. Water's our golden ticket, and one of the, you know, huge reasons we have people coming here. And very unique, creative design to deal with that stormwater, that just can't be spoken of highly enough. I mean, millions and millions of gallons of water untreated was just flowing into the bay, and this is part of the way we're dealing with that. Very creatively. I think about the economic impact of this. One of the things we get, you know, just over and over and again, we get told, well, you guys are paving over paradise. You're, you're just, there's no green space. There's no, you guys aren't taking care of the environment. And here's a project that just belies that. It is just, this is, you know, we've heard it described as our, as our little mini Central Park, and it certainly is. And the way that it is going to draw people and businesses, and I will, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Ziegler on this. I would really love for you, in the future, to look at the possibility of just an exceptional waterfront. I do like, I think the Canal District is wonderful in the way it's designed. It fits a certain aspect of that, but it doesn't really fit what Commissioner Ziegler's talking about and what is really desperately needed. I think we've all admitted, there's a gaping miss there that we've got to get. So if there's a way to design this, look forward to some creative ways to bring a beautiful waterfront restaurant to this area. I'll talk about the TIF for a minute. I am not a fan of TIFs. And I probably, and for me, anyway, this, I was not here when this was originally voted on. But one thing I thought was a great idea, and I certainly agreed with and thought was very perceptive and wise, was to say, let's, let's not make this a 30-year, let's make this a 15-year review, where we can take a look at where we are. And that's only 11 years away. So we can look at where we are at that point and make decisions. One thing about this commission, historically, has been very fiscally responsible and is, you know, my hope, I won't be here in 11 years on the commission, but I hope that that legacy will continue, and I certainly believe it will. This community is very, very concerned about that, taking care of our tax dollars. So I hope that in 11 years, when we review that, and again, as you said, we have opportunity time and time again through this whole process to be involved in it. So I appreciate that. The other thing that's, I think is wonderful is to, if in fact this is possible, to be able to create an endowment and revenues that will pay for the maintenance of the park. Again, I'm glad it's not, I'm glad it's on the city, but I think you guys coming together with that endowment and with the revenue sources that'll come out of here, I think that's going to be an important thing going forward, because it's, sometimes it's a lot easier to build than it is to maintain. So we've got to be very careful about that. But just thank you for the work you're doing, and happy to move it forward. Thank you.
Okay, we have Commissioner Ziegler.
Yeah, I already went in-depth in my previous conversations, still have my issue with the waterfront dining. I think every, every step that we take and every phase that we approve gets us farther away from that being incorporated, something that I mentioned early on, and again, I think the community desperately is begging for. But aside from that, I'll be a no today, just for consistency. I did vote against this at the beginning. I am not a fan of TIFs. But with all of that said, this will be exciting to get done, and you guys have a great team. I mean, if I was to assemble a team to get something like this done, I think it's hard to find anyone in town that would be a better member of that team. You guys have been very great to work with, and you're very competent. So, you know, my no is nothing against the team. I think you guys do good work, and I think that's important for the public to understand as well, when you're doing a project so big with so much, you know, so, such a large amount of tax dollars going towards it. I appreciate your team's work, and I appreciate, you know, the competency that you have, that you guys have assembled. I think that speaks volumes.
Thank you.
Okay. That said, two quick thoughts. Number one, this is a perfect example of how this board is different from many, many other government boards. You see disagreement here today. There has been nobody slinging anything at anyone else. It's a disagreement. And when we take a break in a little bit, we'll go back there and have a cup of coffee, and there will be no snarling at each other. That's the distinct, we're all very proud of that. The other thing is, I'm blessed that my three kids and five grandchildren, with hopefully more to come, all live in Sarasota County. And I will forever think back on how that was a wise decision to be the third vote for this. And I will tell you that you need to be forewarned, and some of you I don't know as well as Bill, but Bill knows this, in future years, my sense of embellishment and exaggeration, by another three or four years from now, this was entirely my idea. I did it all myself, and you all did nothing. But best of luck with this. With that, we're going to call Commissioner Ziegler. You were done, right, buddy?
Yeah.
I just, I didn't erase you. My fault. With that said, we have a motion to approve. We are on item number 31. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. The motion passes 3 to 2, with Commissioners Moran and Ziegler voting no. So thank you all. Very well done. We're on item number 32. Consideration of potential amendments to the county's environment...